It, uh, all right, I'm calling to order it's eight oh two AM on Monday, March twenty fifth. We are calling to order the special meeting of the Lancaster Select Board. Uh, note, this meeting is being recorded, um, and I don't know if later broadcast on Sterling Lancaster TV, but let's just say it just in case. Um, and before we start, we will do a roll call, Ms. Turner.
I'm here.
Mr. Allison.
Here.
And Mr. Kerrigan's here. Okay, all present and accounted for. Um, okay, uh, good morning, Chief, morning Kate. How we doing?
Delightful.
Oh, my God, that's nice. It's not a nice way to start a week. Um, all right, uh, let's get rolling, um, few items. First, my apology, uh, we discussed at the last meeting and I know Jason, you're gonna come back about the open. Sorry, the, the public comment part, it's not on the agenda, um, and I should have caught that earlier. But, uh, it was, this meeting was called as a special quick meeting, so just wanted to. No, you know that I knew that it's not there and I, I apologize. Okay, next. Review of actual and potential select board sponsored warrant articles for the annual time meeting of twenty twenty four. Kate, take it away.
Yeah, so, um, we obviously will have a meeting after, um, for you guys to go over, so, um. For the sake of, uh, keeping this brief, I didn't think you wanted to go over all of the ones that we know that you all sponsor, um.
No, just the ones that, that we have another chance to opine on whether or not we'd sponsor them is what was my intent of this meeting.
Yep, so, so pretty much, um, with the, uh. With the exception of the DPW budget articles, you all sponsor pretty much the first dozen.
Right.
So, um, skipping down from that, um, we are looking to adopt a special, um, MGL to, um, guide our, and allow our treasurer to invest, um, in a way that is consistent with what our auditors have been saying. So, I would think that would be non-controversial, but, um. Would love for the select board, you want me to just tell you all of them and then you can take them one by one?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, all right, um, the, uh. Beginning the adoption process for, uh, Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-on-one, which allows. Even though we've done it in the past, we never accepted the MGL to allow for a police chief and fire chief in a dual role, which the board can call a commissioner or some other title that the board. Do so, does so declare the forest legacy parcels. I know they came to you all at the last meeting, but just to understand that you all want to sponsor that, um, we're looking to do an amendment to the hawkers and peddlers. Um, the chief is here, if you have any specific questions for that, but effectively, um, our current bylaw deals with persons that go door-to-door selling fruit and fish, um, but really doesn't deal with persons selling solar panels, um, and also has, um, some archaic language in there relative to whom they're supposed to get approval from, which right now is the select board, but that's not practical because you all only meet every two weeks and it would have to be duly called, so to have it go through the police department, which of course it has been. But it has been going through the police department as a practice and not as a matter of policy. So, um, looking for that, um, we would like to.
Basically, that's basically updating a do not knock list or something, right?
Yes, correct, yeah, but not just for people selling fish.
Right.
Although you can keep that on there if we.
Also, yeah, but also not just for people selling solar.
Right.
General, if you wish not to be knocked.
Fish or solar or any other wares.
Or anything else, yes.
We are looking to have a mass general law adoption. Again, we've been doing this in practice, but it would be very helpful to have it on the record to allow call firefighters to calculate their years and time of service to Lancaster towards their retirement. This is especially helpful for those who are employed as firefighters in other communities, but also have the service here. Um, an amendment to the animal control article, which, um, would be more in line with our practice running through the, um, chief's office. There is a, um, a request for a, uh, beginning the process for a five-member select board. And that came from the government study committee and another, um, request from the government study committee to have, um. Members that serve on town boards and committees be required to be residents of the town of Lancaster.
Right.
So.
That it?
That was six.
Right, yes, it was. Alex, Jason, any thoughts? Concerns? It looks like you're frozen in practice or in computer.
Must be computer, can you hear me?
I can hear you, but not see your mouth moving, so go ahead.
Ah, well, that. Zoom is not responding, I see that. If you cannot hear me, just speak up and.
I can hear you.
All right, um. So, question, um, everything sounds good, we've touched on most of them before. Kate, if you could sort of, not, not today necessarily, but, um, in order for us to make a formal uh, opinion about the treasurer investing, it would be nice to, just to see what the changes are from the current uh, CMR that we operate under and what the impacts are also just. I think it's always helpful to see the best practices of what other communities are doing or the associations say.
Right, right now, there's nothing, Alex, so, uh, what you'll get is the draft, you'll get the draft warrant that has all of the language in it. What we're trying to do, um, the chief and I, um, went through the town code and tried to pick out the issues in the town code that are either not addressed or they're not in concert with what's happening, so.
Okay.
I, but yes, I will provide, I will provide you, but we're not, we're not, um. We're not amending anything, we're adding to it.
Okay. And that. I'm sure the Harper's Peddler seems fairly minded, we've discussed the forest legacy, the call firefighters, I can understand lots of really positive reasons to do that. The only downside that I could think of is the cost to the town. Um, although I think it's probably a good idea anyway, but do we have any kind of costing on that?
No, I mean, it would be, people would have, would be able to buy back their service, so, you know, but the cost would be no more than what we're already doing. You, depending on the number of hours that they have, those positions are exempt from, um. Uh, social security, so they would get back what they paid in, so the idea would be that if somebody had fifteen years in a neighboring community, but they were on for ten years as a call firefighter, perhaps they add up their time and they're able to buy back two or three years, something of that nature.
Yeah. Okay, um, in the ACO. It's an example that Chief Moody has used as something that could be improved, so if, I think we're familiar with it. Um, has the Animal Control Commission, which is started this, weighed in on this?
We don't have a, a animal control commission that is meeting with any regularity. Actually with.
They used to meet, they used to meet as needed, um, but I just didn't know if they had, if this.
Now, that, that's something we're trying to change, so that it fits more in line with practice, so you'll see those as well.
It'd be great if we could get there, if this was one of those as needed, or if they could just opine, I'm sure they'd probably be supportive of it, I would think.
Well. While she's, I'm assuming booting back in, um. Jason, do you have any?
I don't have any specific questions, no.
Okay, and to be very clear, we're merely, uh. By us sponsoring articles doesn't mean we need to opine on whether or not we endorse the.
Correct, correct.
Because I have significant, I have concerns about. Uh, as, it's not a secret about the five-person select board, um, uh, article, but, um.
I'm back, I apologize, I'm gonna take my pitch. Anyway.
All right, you wanna keep going then?
I, I think I'm pretty good, the first twelve, Kate, I assume are the standard sort of articles, the budgeting and so on, and does that include the CPA? Okay, and do we know what the, we know, do we have that list right now?
Yes, um, I'll, you'll have a draft.
Okay.
Uh, by probably the end of the day or first thing tomorrow.
Okay. And then the government study and they've given us a report, so I understand, um, what those are. Thank you.
The, yeah, there's two, um, there was, there was three, but one doesn't need town meeting, the standing committee, right, exactly, so, yeah, that's, that covers the, the three suggestions.
Yeah, um, uh. Kate, now what's the best process for this? Do we take, do you want us to do them one at a time for approving to put them on the warrant?
Um. Yeah, that would probably be, oop, sorry, someone said something.
I don't know. Go ahead, keep going.
Oh, yes.
If I could make a quick comment?
Let me just get the answer to the question I just asked.
Yes, one at a time would be helpful.
Uh, Russ, uh, I apologize at the outset that there wasn't public comment on the agenda, so I don't.
Yeah, it's not public comment, it's regarding, uh, the third government study committee article that we submitted for you to, uh, to add to the warrant. You just mentioned.
Yeah, we discussed it at our meeting with your, the chair of the government study committee.
Yeah, the, the committee submitted, not Emily.
Let me finish my sentence. We discussed it, uh, at the meeting where she was at, representing the committee, uh, and, uh. Said that it wasn't, I mean, it doesn't require town meeting approval.
It's a, a permanent committee establishing the bylaws, though, rather than a, a select board standing committee.
I appreciate, I appreciate your comment, thank you. So, um, Kate, uh, which is the first one you want us to consider?
Uh, the investing.
Is there a motion?
Uh, I'm sorry, I thought.
Is there a motion to approve the, the, putting this, this is just putting them on the warrant, because the warrant. Any further discussion on this warrant article?
Yeah, before we decide to sponsor it or not, I'd like to just look at what we talked about earlier, the options on that, but yes.
Well. I mean, we can, we can recommend against after the article, after the warrant is closed, if you'd like. But this is the meeting in which we're deciding.
Right, the warrant, according to previous, we still have four more days for articles to come in.
We.
Right?
Right, but this is the time where we're, whether we're sponsoring or not, we don't have another meeting scheduled between now and.
I know, we, I know, I thought it was unusual that we picked one before this, but that's fine.
But what was unusual, you were in the meeting when we did it.
I understand that, and I wrote an email, I suppose, I, I just thought it was unusual to do, have the article to put the articles on before the deadline. For articles to be. But however, it's fine, we can knock these off.
We always close the, we always sponsor our articles before, so we put them on the warrant, and then we close the warrant after people had a chance to submit articles. This is just any select board sponsor, you can vote against it.
Um, no, I just don't have enough information right now, so. I will. I'm, I'm not sure what you want, putting it on the, uh, putting anything on the, putting anything on, I think should be heard. So I'm happy to put it on, but I want more information before we decide to, to sponsor it or not.
So, so the difference between sponsoring it or endorsing it? You can't get on the warrant unless we sponsor it, or, um, it's these particular articles.
Okay, I'm happy to put this on.
Then we are gonna later have a meeting once the warrant is set, as we do every time we have a town meeting, and either give a thumbs up saying the select board recommends positive action or.
Okay, in my time, it's a little bit different, this is fine, let's put it on. But, but endorsing it or whatever you want to call it, we'll talk about that afterwards. Make sense?
Steve, did we lose you?
Oh, he's back.
Are you back?
Now I'm back. You missed my incredibly eloquent, um, summary of things, no, um. Alex, so, this meeting is about whether or not, it's on the warrant, it's not whether or not we recommend it.
I understand, and I'm fine with putting, and to me, anything should see the light of day, so yes, I'd like to put it on the warrant.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye, aye. Alex, was that an aye?
It is, sorry.
Awesome, uh, does anyone, let me just, let me consider this, does anyone have objection to any of the remaining articles?
Uh, so I will not be voting for the five-person committee, I will not be voting for the standing ad hoc committee, um.
Okay, then let's continue to take them one at a time.
Yeah.
All right, uh, what's number two?
MGL, uh, that's the forty-one, one-on-one to allow, uh, chief of police and fire chief with a title that the select board can determine.
Promotion to sponsor, chapter forty-one article.
Got it, is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor, oh, sorry, any discussion? All's in favor, Jason?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Steve, aye, three zero zero, what's next?
Uh, the amendment to the hawkers and peddlers bylaw in, in the town code.
Got it, there are motion?
They're moved.
Second.
All right, discussion? All's in favor, Jason?
Aye.
Sorry, you're drinking, Alex? Steve, aye, three zero zero, what's next?
Uh, the acceptance of the, uh, two MGLs for the firefighter, call firefighters to calculate for retirement.
Got it, there are motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, Jason?
Aye.
Alex? Steve, aye, three zero zero. What's next?
Amendment of the animal control bylaw.
Okay, um, uh, is there a motion?
They're moved.
Second.
Uh, okay, any discussion?
I just think, again, if, if we could reach out to the Animal Control Commission, who have served us so well, I think it'd be beneficial to have there.
Yep, our chief is on that like white on rice.
And chief, you'll report back to us before we vote whether we support this or not, yes? Whether we recommend positive action or not, got it, great, thank you, chief, thank you, Alex. Uh, all those in favors signify by saying aye, Jason?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Steve, Steve, aye. What's the next one?
Uh, five-member select board from a three-member.
Pardon me, Kate, before we get to that, I think we skipped over forest legacy, does that require a?
Oh, sorry.
Oh, I, well, yes, sorry, yep, I just, I was trying to confirm, I know you guys said it at the last meeting. So I just assumed, but do you want to ratify that just for clarity's sake?
Why not, while we're here?
Okay, then, um, that would be the forest legacy language that they had, not the budget language, because that's actually included in the capital, so it would be the, um. The language that they proposed for the conservation restrictions.
Okay, is there a motion?
No, some move.
Second.
Uh, uh. Okay, um. What's next?
Uh, discussion.
Oh, sorry, is there a discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, forest legacy is all set for the warrant, what's next?
Five-member board.
I'll offer a motion to sponsor the article with the five-member, uh, but per the government study committee's recommendations of the five-member board.
Right. Is there a second? All right.
So when I, there's no, if there's no, with lack of a second, then there's no room to discuss why we wouldn't be putting on a government studies recommendations, is that correct?
I mean, I can second for the purpose of discussion, I, I'll step down from the chair and second for the purpose of discussion, um. I, uh, I've made no, uh, mystery of my, I think that the, um, government study committee did a fantastic job, and I, I definitely appreciate the work they did and work on to implement, um. Uh, many of the things they suggested, I've made no mystery of the fact that I don't believe the town, um. Uh, needs a five-person select board, but so I, my position on this should not be a shock to anybody.
Yeah, no, I'll just jump in, um, yeah, I'm really grateful for the work that the committee did, um, what it um, helped inform me on is my belief that we need a charter commission, and I believe that's the right first step. And that's gonna be some work, so I don't want to, um, put solutions forward before we do any of that, I, I do believe there are other pressing matters that are outside the scope of this conversation, other than, uh, the board and the committee. Um, so, so those are my, those are my feelings, this charter commission is the way to go, uh, before we get to these solutions, and that's my objective, thank you.
Thank you, and I would, I would suggest also that their report is somewhat evergreen in that they, um. They've given us a really good analysis and benchmarking, um, and a sense of what their committee, um, suggests, which I tend to agree with, Jason will be a great starting point from a data collection for a charter commission and, um, a good way to, to start moving forward, but, uh, again, I've made no mystery of my position on this question, so, um. Um. So now, you have a motion, go ahead.
I guess for my discussion purposes, as I said earlier about the other articles, even those that I remain to that I have not chosen to, um, endorse, as you would say, yeah. Um, a well-thought-out, data-driven proposal that was presented to us numerous times, I think deserves the, uh, the people uh, rather than us, especially where we're personal investment and there's a three-member board going to five, I think it, um. In, it should see, it should see a vote, uh, so.
Which I have no doubt someday it, it will, I, I very firmly believe that, um. We're, we're elected by our neighbors, um, to make decisions like this, um. If we were elected to just oversee everything going everywhere all the time, then there's somewhat no point of having a select board in the first place. So, um, I understand this may not be a popular decision with some, but, um. But it is, again, no mystery where my position is, Jason, and I'd like to call a vote.
Yeah, I mean, it did have a vote, it had a vote at the, at the last, uh, town meeting, um, and, and there's always an opportunity for citizens petition. Um, but, you know, my, I've kind of expressed my singular opinion on it, thank you.
Okay, all right, um. No, for hearing, no for the discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye, Alex, I'm gonna jump right to you.
Uh, nay.
Well, this is to put it on.
Oh, to put it on, I'm sorry, aye.
Um, okay, um, all those opposed, Jason?
Uh, nay.
And Steve, nay, that one fails, uh, one, two, zero, what's next?
Um, members of a committee commission, um, being residents, it, um, Mr. Chair, if I could just or I guess, did you want to make a motion first or just?
You can do an explainer if you want.
Um, so I, the only thing that we need to address should this move forward is that, um. The principal assessor, as it is right now, is not a member of, uh, the assessors board. Should this, uh, not pass, there is a member of the board of assessors who is, um, not a resident, she's also on the government study committee. And so, that would pretty much by default have the principal assessor, um. And the principal assessor is also not a resident, as, uh, most town, town staff aren't at, right now, so. Um, the way that this would be written precludes that, and so I would just caution the board, um, whether we have some type of amendment to language, et cetera. Um, that I just, I just want to make sure that I'm being clear, that we can't function without having either the principal assessor or, or somebody in that role.
Okay.
Government studies is being dissolved, so that wouldn't be an issue.
Susan, Susan, you gotta, Susan, you gotta get called on, sorry. Um.
Can I, may I speak to that, Steve?
Uh, you may.
Thank you, um, so, I, my understanding is that have attended, having attended and watched the government study is that I think, and I could be wrong, but we should definitely ask this question, you're right to bring it up, Kate. Is that people that were in the roles would remain in those roles until they um, finished their service or term, but, so I could be wrong, but that bears, that bears looking at. And the other thing is, I thought that, the, the person that you were speaking to, Deb, is on several committees, but I thought it was, wasn't she on tax fairness, is she, I don't, is there somebody on government study who's from out of town?
I meant tax, I meant tax fairness, I said the wrong thing, I apologize, I'm, I'm not as worried about the ad hocks, I, I was just saying that our principal assessor, Bobby Joe Williams, just came in and told me that, and she said in most communities, the principal assessor is on the board of assessors. This community, that is not the case, it has not been the case, but should Deb not be, uh, permitted to serve because she's no longer a resident, that's fine. She would then have to take the role on the committee and she is also not a resident, that, that's all I was trying to bring up.
Okay. That's, sounds good, thank you.
Um, all right, so, in order to have further discussion on this, we would need a motion.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Uh, just to confirm, this is a motion to require, uh, the principal assessor to be a resident of the town and members of the board of assessors to be residents of the town, is that right?
Technically, this is a motion to put the warrant article that's suggested on the warrant, but yes.
A warrant article which would require that.
No, it, it, the, the article requires all board and committee members, I was just bringing to your attention just one.
Which many towns do have this requirement, most, all towns that I know of, actually, I don't know one that doesn't.
We're still seeking a second.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I will not be seconding this.
Okay, uh, I will second for the purpose of discussion, um, uh, so my, K, you've hit nail on the head for my concern, I mean, I think if there's language change that can be done. Um, I understand the concept, I just, I know that we've got one very glaring example of why, um. Uh. Why, um, it's a problem for us right now, um, I just wonder whether there are examples in the future of where it would be a problem for us as well, um, I, I'm also not a I'm not a big believer in exclusionary government, um, I'm more looking for inclusionary, like, I think about people who work at RFK, for instance, like, what if there's a commission or a board where they're as a, as a human services, uh, agency in town where their input might have great value, um, why would we exclude them from serving, or if there was a business owner and there was, uh, another, uh, board or commission that their input again might, might have great value, um, I understand not electing people to things, but, um. Uh, who don't live here, but, but pointing people to boards and commissions who bring a certain subject matter expertise. Um, and given we are a somewhat small town, um, that we can take the, the benefit of, uh, the knowledge and experience from people who just have a have a connection or own a business or run an agency here, it seems like that would be limiting, uh, aside from the assessor example, which is a tough one to overcome already, so that's sort of where my concern is coming from, um. Uh. But I, the, you know, we're open for discussions, I don't know if Alex or Jason have any.
Yeah, I can quickly go, um. So. So tactically, I don't, I don't ever remember a conversation while I was on the board or, or watching select board meetings where we had to choose between somebody from this town and from another town. So, you know, tactically, I just don't understand, like, what would change? I mean, I know what would change, but like, what, what the deal is and that, which, which goes to the strategic point, which is, this feels like a solution without a problem. I don't, I don't really know what's possible, what problem we're trying to solve, so I'm hesitant to kind of just paint a broad stroke without knowing, like, what the desired outcome is, other than we're gonna lose some people on the boards, like, if there was you know, a handful of people that are like, we want to be on these committees and stuff, and we're not, because people from other towns are there, like, that's one thing, but that's not what I'm seeing, so, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm.
Done.
Thank you.
All right, um, Alex?
Yeah, no, no surprise that I am, I dissent, um, the uh, as Steve, as you said, uh, I am I agree with you that I am for in, uh, in, inclusive uh, an inclusive atmosphere or culture in our government, and there is no pe, better people to govern, the way the local government is designed is for residents to govern themselves. Um, we can bring in well-thought-out experts from far and wide, but uh, that's not the way our government is designed, and I think that. that's not the way our government is designed. And I think that there is, that we should, we should embrace a local governance if possible. And I can think, by the way, if nothing more inclusionary than opening up to our previous discussion about five members, you know, technically in a direct democracy, that's why I love town meeting, one vote, one person. Getting closer, but getting back to this article, the most towns that I know of do this. And I was really impressed by the quality of the government study committee's reports. That it was not, it wasn't opinion, it was data-driven. And they looked at best practices. So it wasn't just us deciding for them. With the voters deciding things. It was based on, on strong rationale. So I, and I don't discredit the work that our assessor has done, but those are policy, and for policy decisions, I think it's important to have residents making policy decisions. For staff, I, there had been discussion in the past of having town administrators, for example, people talked about having residency requirements. I think it should actually be the reverse in some cases. Because you need to have people who, who don't have that same investment, but do it as strictly as a, as a job. Although I can think of no more dedicated staff person than Everett, who is Muri, who is also a resident and employee. So so I think the bottom line is that town meeting is our legislator. They're the wise. They should be offered the opportunity to opine on this. And taking the opportunity from them for this or the five-member board is not, especially when it's been, we have charged a government study committee, which actually you, you helped with greatly, Steve, is something that I think that the people deserve to vote on. And I'm saddened that we're not allowing it.
It's not that we're not allowed, there's, there are other avenues for any citizen petition to come before.
But I mean, we're encouraging people to, as you.
We're elected to give the, the townspeople a sense of, I mean, A, our leadership, and then a sense of the direction we want the town to go in. And I think what you're, you're expressing your opinion, which is fantastic, and I appreciate that you're expressing your opinion. Jason's expressed his. That's what we're each individually elected to do. And then the townspeople get a chance, both in town meeting, to agree with us or disagree with us. And then again, at the ballot box, to agree with us or disagree with us.
Exactly. And this will go to the ballot, it would go to the legislature, and it would come back.
But we're not talking about, now you're conflating. I want to stay, make sure we stick with the one about the we've already acted on one item.
You're right, you're right. I apologize, you're right.
At any rate, I'm not sure further discussion is gonna convince either one of you to change.
I just, I just, putting something on, I thought then we will have the choice of whether or not we want to endorse it, but not allowing people to.
And, but we have this choice as well.
Okay.
All right, any further discussion? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Alex?
Aye.
Jason, okay, all those opposed?
No.
And I will be voting no as well. All right, what's next?
Sorry, go ahead, Alex.
Last one that had, they had asked for was to have a standing government study committee.
Right, Alex, we discussed this at our last meeting and, and earlier in this meeting.
And that, that would be formed by law. And we decided, I guess, not to put that on and just go with an ad hoc kind of thing.
We, we discussed this at the last meeting and again, at the beginning of this meeting, that it was the belief that you were in the meeting. The belief of the board at the time that it doesn't require town meeting vote to create a committee in town. So I'm stating for a fact, Alex, what we already discussed twice now as a board. So we've got a tight schedule today and a lot to go over, so rehashing something we've considered twice already doesn't seem like a good use of our time.
I wanted to clarify because obviously I thought there was a wrong confusion, and I thought they wanted to advance this, they would have to.
You didn't vote on it.
Kate, go ahead. What's next?
On the agenda? Okay, well there was a, the number two was the ratification of an employment agreement for a public safety commissioner, but I think we still need to.
Yeah, can we table that?
Talk about that.
Point of order, sorry, were there any other articles?
I think we're done with the articles. Yes?
Yes, that was the last one. Yeah. Discussion and acceptance of the amendments to the personnel draft. So I had shared these maybe two weeks ago now. I'm happy to, do you, do you need me to share my screen so you can be refreshed about what we're talking about, or?
I, I don't. Yeah, I don't, but I asked my colleagues if they, do you need to share a screen? Jason does not.
Look, a recap would be great, Kate, especially for people to understand.
Sure. So, so for fire, we are looking at, so the fire fighters were covered by a collective bargaining agreement, which they decertified right around the time of town meeting. And so town meeting adopted our personnel bylaw, which refers to policies and procedures. And while the policies and procedures were written for the majority of town staff who are predominantly in shift work, nine to five or something similar to that. It didn't necessarily meet the criteria for firefighters, including their work of non-contiguous emergency overtime. And what is, what constitutes their work week. And so I provided you a draft that is somewhere in the neighborhood of about 10 pages that deals with work assignments and duties. Residency, not that they have to live here, but proximity to the station. How seniority for bidding of shifts is assigned. Layoff and recall, should that ever be necessary. How assignments are provided for special details. Scheduling and staffing. Pay rates, overtime and callback. Paid leave and then health and safety in uniforms, and then the promotional opportunities, including the exams and some training. The hours of work, right now, we, we have just, and I had put this in the last one, but it just says hold for future use because we need to go through the process of working through that. And then paid time off. So because firefighters, some of them work 24-hour shifts. When you say a day, that could be construed as 24 hours, when a day is really eight. So we added a C under the regular bylaw attendance hours of work to say that all references to paid time off for emergency personnel shall mean no more than eight hours. Or, or four hours for part-time. So we're trying to make sure that we are not ambiguous. And so like I said, you got those a couple of weeks ago, and it would be helpful if we could, you know, move forward so we can start, you know, having the, the chief be able to put those into practice.
Those are great. Thank you very much. I think everybody understands those, and it's much needed. Thanks for the recap.
Oops, you're muted, Steve.
Well, I was brilliant whenever I just. Is there a motion to approve the new personnel policies?
So moved.
There's a second.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Thanks, Kate, for continuing on the effort to clean these things up and get us where we need to be. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Jason?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Steve, aye.
In that line, when are we gonna, any news on the Collins report, or are we just gonna do that after?
Uh, you should actually have that by your next meeting.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is schedule of warrant review meeting. So that is the next step in our annual process for the annual town meeting.
So last year you did both of these things the same, which is we talked about the articles, we got questions, and then the select board deliberated on whether you were in favor or not. And we were able to do that in such time that we were able to put those into the warrant before it went to print. If that is what you still want to do, you have, you would have to schedule that in the next probably 10 to 14 days.
So we have a meeting scheduled for April 1. Is that too soon?
Not for me.
I mean, might as well just do, give people as much information as possible, right? Because otherwise, we'd have to schedule a special meeting, right? Which then messes with the planning board schedule, et cetera. Do my colleagues have a concern with using the time we already have allocated in our calendars?
I don't have any concerns. I yield to whatever's easiest for schedules.
No, it's fine.
Sounds good. And then the public forum. Can we discuss just when to schedule that, give our, my colleagues a chance to look at their calendars, because that's a totally separate thing. We can discuss that on the first, if that makes sense. And again, this is just in keeping with what we've done the last few years, have a forum where we just go through not any particular side of an issue, but just explain the articles to the people in plain English. Awesome. Next is approval of conservation commission conflict of interest.
Yes, I'm wondering if those members are here.
I don't see.
I just don't want to speak on their behalf if they're here and can speak.
I don't see anyone, no.
Okay, well then let me.
If they're not here, do we want to wait till the first to consider it?
Well, so this is because there are a, a number of persons, well, two on the conservation commission that abut a, another community member. So they have put in their disclosure of you know, non-financial interest, and that needs to be approved by the board. I believe that the impetus for putting it on this meeting is that the hearing is coming up this week.
Yeah. I will say, I looked at the, I mean, I don't have a I, I, it, it doesn't appear to me that anyone purchased a home just to be Machiavellian uh, have exercised some great influence over the process when they got on the conservation commission. So I would have no problem granting both those requests to waive the, the conflict of interest.
And just to be clear, it, we're, we're not talking about someone erecting a boathouse or something. We're talking about one helical pile for a, you know, an outside uh, structure. That would be in the wetlands area. So both commissioners feel that they can dutifully do their jobs as commissioners and, and have no financial interest in the project or whatnot, but they are abutters, so.
All right, does anyone, is there a motion, or does anyone want to comment on that?
Question, so we had a different, that, this is not related to the one that Jim and wanted for.
Not to Tom for Hawthorne, I know.
No. I, interestingly enough, I was in a similar position when they were putting sewer through Main Street and talking to the, to the Ethics Commission. They felt that in small towns in particular, there were times when people would have to almost through a rule of necessity vote on something that would impact them. This, but it would, this is a, I think, a greater good argument. So they need to be able to to do their job. Missioners, so I would support it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll just quickly add that I think this is really a good thing. What it means is people are paying attention, right? And they know that there's a potential issue, so they're doing due diligence and trying to be really upfront. I just want to be grateful for that. And I've got no problem supporting this.
All right, let's get a motion.
Motion to grant.
I'll move to approve the conservation commission conflict of interest as requested.
All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Jason?
Aye.
Alex? Steve, aye. Three zeros, oh, thank you. Next up is town clerk's request regarding mail-in ballots for the annual town election, and there's an asterix next to it. I'm sure means something.
I believe the asterix means it was part of the amended.
And Mandy Cannon, our town clerk, is, is on the call, if you have any questions. She sent a a memo, which I gave to you all on Thursday. Alex, I did see an email from you, but it was at one o'clock in the morning, this morning. And so I haven't gotten to research your questions.
Uh, yeah, I apologize. I was trying to make sure I was up to speed for this morning, and it was I got it off to you and Mandy. I think so.
So the question before us is, do we have, do we, basically, do we pay for mail-in ballots for the annual town meeting, their annual town election? Such as the federal elections and state elections? Yes?
Yeah, through the chair, can I just recap my question to Mandy?
By short, let me just get my question answered first, and then we'll recap your question. Is that, in essence, yes? The question before us?
Yes, effectively, the question is, do, do you wish to waive it? Because if you don't waive it, then by default.
That helps. All right. Sorry, yes, Alex, go ahead, recap your question.
So I apologize. I was trying to look, because to be honest with you, my initial reaction is to keep remove as many barriers as possible to voting. I, but I also want to honor the work of that. So I was looking, I, you sent a very, Kate and Mandy sent a very comprehensive request. Some feedback. About waiving the, the mail-in ballots for this local election. My understanding and just recapping, looking at different towns, what they had done, the few towns that I found, and it not comprehensive, I just Googled. Was Lynnfield and Millbury. And that, and they did it, and then it was, they cited the law that was referenced in early voting, excuse me, the mail-in law, and they you have to have a hearing within, and make a decision within 45 days, which I don't think allows us enough time, unless I'm reading this wrong, and you would know better than I am. Think about that. So that, those, in those communities, they had a selectman's hearing, the selectman approved it, and it did. Other than that, I couldn't, I didn't see anything. So do you want to just tell me where I'm, what, what I'm missing? Because I'm an amateur.
Mandy, can you, Mandy or Kate? Mandy, you're muted.
Muted, Mandy.
Sorry. Yeah, everything that I've gotten from the state, and we have webinars like weekly with them. It does have to be voted 45 days before, but just at a select board meeting. Today, we are still outside of the 45 days.
Thank you.
How many people requested mail-in last, because it's only, it's relatively new law, a couple of years, right?
Yeah, so the difference this year from any other year, I mean, I can tell you, so in 2020, or in 2021, there was six mail-in votes. In 2022, I don't know, there, I don't know what happened in 2022, but I have no records of anything in our computer system. Last year, for the town election, there was 39 votes cast by mail. For the special town election, there was 12 cast by mail. So the difference this year compared to any of these other years is that at the beginning of this year, the state sent out an application to everybody in the entire, any registered voter, saying for mail-in voting for like the presidential primaries and the state primaries, however, they put an option that says all elections. So because it says all elections, that includes our town election. So the difference this year is that anyone that checked off that all elections is included as a mail-in voter for our town election, unless we opt out. So it's different this year than any other year. We have, we got 893 total mail-in applications for this year. About 850, 860 of them chose all elections.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chair, may I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, you may.
Not really questions, I was just going to clarify. And Kate, I think you, you answered these for me already. So there's still, there still will be early voting. Is that correct?
Yeah, there's, there's early voting the week leading up to the election. And absentee voting is always the thing. You can, if you, if you qualify, you can always vote by mail absentee. Anyways, this wouldn't negate that option. If you're not, if you're out of, if you're out of town that day, if you're sick, you can't, with things like that. Is almost an option.
And should we vote to not allow it next year if there's an uproar that, hey, y'all made a mistake? We can change our mind and go back to mail-in, is that correct?
So this vote is just for this upcoming election.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, okay. And the main concern, such that there is one, is the the lack of interest in past elections versus the cost, which is significant. Yes?
I didn't know who that was addressed to, yeah, I, yes, just, you know, we didn't budget for it, which doesn't mean that we can't we can't, we just want to make sure we're getting good direction.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like the state put us in a bind, um.
Oh, well, we're used to that.
I know, but now eight hundred plus people expect to get a mail-in ballot, um, from the town, um before town election, so I, you know, it's, it will cost us money, but, and it'll be a pain. But had they not done that, I would have been probably more inclined than I had that check box, I would have more inclined to waive it this, this go-around, but given that they had it and eight hundred plus people checked the box, there's an expectation, I would think that they would have that available to them.
I, I tend to agree with Steve, I can't think of, um I don't know how for practical purposes we get out the world to eight, the word, I mean, we have the, this, a meeting or hearing that we have a handful of people at. Um, and the, I'm sure the press will do their best to get it out, but um, some of those eight hundred ninety-three people have an expectation, some of them just checked it for convenience. Um, a lot of them, and I do, I do realize how much of work it puts on you, so it's, it's really, uh, really torn. I think if we had going forward, if we address this and decide not to do it for local elections, and we do it right up front at the beginning of the year, I'm fine with it. As long as there's a common understanding that we can say this isn't for local elections. I just think we're a little late in the process for this particular election. What, Mandy, you said other, many other of our neighbors have waived it, what, is that like Bolton, Sterling, Clinton kind of thing, or?
Uh, no, I don't know, I don't know about Bolton and um, Clinton, I know Stowe was leaving it. Um, and there, I mean, there's plenty of towns around, uh, not, I don't know necessarily around us, but just in general, in the state, plenty of towns and cities have opted out.
Okay. It's a, this is relatively new. My understanding is this is, this is my lesson in civics that you're going to bone me up on, Mandy. My understanding is that absentee was supposed, supposed to, technically, people use it for all kinds of reasons. But you have, there's some sort of thresholds that you have to meet, be.
Yeah, that, I totally, and I would love to go down that rabbit hole, um.
But not now.
But it's right now, we have, we have lots to do, uh, yet on our agenda, so, um. I guess the question before us is whether or not there's a motion to waive, um the mail-in ballots for the annual town election.
Yeah, I move to uh, waive the mail-in ballots for the annual town election.
Is there a second? Alex?
No, thank you. Well, I can second it for discussion, but.
It's entirely up to your, it's your vote. All right, uh, apologies for the additional work and costs, um, but that motion fails for lack of a second. Um, all right, now, um the board will move into executive session, I'll entertain a motion, turn to executive session.
Yeah, I uh, move the Lancaster Select Board, uh, to move into executive, executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty-eight, twenty-one A for the following purposes, I to conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiation, negotiations for non-union personnel regarding police and fire departments pursuant to Section twenty-one A two, and to not, to reconvene in open session.
To not reconvene, yeah.
Do not reconvene in open session.
Okay, is there a second?
Thank you.
All right, all in favor? Jason?
Aye.
Alex?
Aye.
Steve, aye. All right, we are going into executive session. Thank you all.